Okay, Ms. Adley, and please start the recording. I would like to call to order the April seventeenth, twenty twenty four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford, Chair of this committee in District Four, Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. We will now have an introduction of committee members, starting with board members, administration staff, board office staff, and all other guests. Tonight, the committee will receive updates around operations, CIP, and budget, along with the second quarter report from the Internal Audit Director. Yes, sure. Ms. Adley, and please call the role.
You want us to introduce ourselves first or not?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Please introduce yourselves.
Okay. Hi, my name is Judy McInnes Murray. I'm a member of the Obama Committee, and I am Chair of the Board.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris, Representative for District Seven and Vice Chair of Obama.
Hello, everyone. Can you all hear me? Alrighty, my name is Rayne Vera Forbes, and I am the student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I am also a member of the Obama Committee. My apologies for my camera being off. I am at an after-school event, and I will also be leaving tonight's meeting earlier due to prior engagements, just to say that for the record.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jocelyn Rout. I am a member of the Obama Committee and a member of the Board of Education. Happy to be here.
Good afternoon, Sharoska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools.
Good afternoon, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services, Prince George's County Public Schools.
Good afternoon, Michelle Winston, Director of Internal Audit.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Adley, and please call the role.
Sure. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Dr. Kenneth Harris?
Present.
Mrs. McInnes Murray?
A present.
Mrs. Rout?
Present.
Ms. Vera Forbes?
Present.
We have a quorum present. May I have a motion to adopt the April seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting agenda?
Motion to adopt the April, what's it, April seventeenth meeting agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. The April seventeenth, twenty twenty four agenda, meeting agenda has been approved. May I have a motion to adopt, to approve the February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
I move to adopt the February, what day?
February fourteen.
February fourteen, twenty twenty four minute meeting.
Second, Jocelyn Rout.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The February fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes are approved. We have one registered public comment speaker this evening, Ms. Natasha James, Legend Charter School Blueprint Funding. Ms. Adley, and is she in the waiting room, ready to come over?
Yes, I just asked her to accept, but she hasn't accepted it.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
She's on now.
Thank you. Ms. James, you can read your testimony at this time.
Oh, good afternoon. I'm sorry, give me one second. I was almost ready, and I didn't know things would go so quickly. So just bear with me one moment, everyone.
Chair Murray, was there something you wanted to mention, just in the, is now an appropriate time, or did you want to wait?
I have no idea what I'm supposed to mention, so give me a hint.
I think you wanted to mention something at the start of the meeting. I, I wasn't sure what it was. Okay, I could be mistaken. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, colleagues and teammates. I know, I didn't know that this was going to come so quickly. And I thank you for bearing with us tonight. My name is Natasha James. I'm co-founder and CEO of Legends Charter School, and we proudly serve nine hundred beautiful Prince Georgians at Legends Charter School, K through eight. And I'm here tonight with my colleague to bring to the surface issues that we're facing as charter operators with the implementation of the blueprint funding. As you are aware, we're in implementation phase.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me, can you please pause the clock, please? Can you please pause the clock? I can't, the, the reception here is choppy, and I can't hear. Pause, pause for one second, Ms. James. Let's have her pause for a second and turn her video off.
Pardon me?
Could you turn your video off because we can't hear you? It's choppy. Okay, thank you. And then you can start maybe the last three sentences. We didn't, we didn't hear that. And then we'll start.
No problem. Can you?
Thank you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. We appreciate and respect the spirit and intent of the blueprint. We believe that the funding should follow the students who need it the most. The issue we are having right now as charter operators are multi-pronged. The sudden, well, the base of that funding is driven by the free and reduced lunch applications that date back three years. As you are aware, during COVID, we don't have sufficient FARMs data that really give an accurate count of which schools are serving who, and the guest estimations that are producing each individual school's per pupil allocation is problematic for operating. So as it relates to Legends in particular, my colleague Shimari, who is the CEO of Equity Now, will give some very detailed implications of the funding. And as he speaks, what we're asking for is a reconsideration of the administrative fee that the district can control. So Shimari, please help our committee understand what's happening and the implications that will have on the quality of service that we'll be able to provide for our students.
Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is A. James. As CEO A. James just said.
I'm sorry, pause, pause for one second.
Charter management organization.
Pause, pause for a second, Mr. James. Pause the clock and start it back. I think it was at one oh eight or one oh five. So only people that are registered to speak may speak, so you can give what you would like to say to Ms. James, and she can read it, but for the record, we, we can't allow people to, two people to speak under one person's name. So.
Okay, no.
The start of the record.
I would go to enter, I mean, to register, and I called the board office, and I didn't get confirmation, so that's why I'm not as prepared as, as possible.
It's okay. It's, it's fine.
To that, if I can reclaim time.
Sure, you can reclaim your time, and it's totally fine. We definitely understand it. We're very happy to have people come to the Obama meeting to present. It's not, we don't have that often, so thank you. We're going to start the clock back at one o'clock, one o'clock, one minute, and then go from there. Thank you.
So in the application of the blueprint execution, basically, for layman's terms, all the schools' budget and their per-pupil allocation was stable at fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Everybody's budget and how we're deciding to staff our schools was fixed at another point. The blueprint is bringing variation. Typically, the state and PG CPS has only withheld two percent of an administrative fee. With now this implementation, this goes from two percent to five percent, and we're not really sure about the different formulas that go into constitute where the seventy-five percent of unrestricted funds from the blueprint are going. The implications of even withholding more than two percent is devastating to like a negative nine percent within, in our case, is a four, one point four million dollar net income difference. As you can imagine, there's no way we're going to cut one point four million dollars, particularly in April. And there are other charters who are in far dire of a scenario than we are. And so as a whole, the charters in Prince George's County serve six thousand, five hundred students whose parents and families chose these high-performing schools for reason, I mean, for very good reason. And moving forward, we understand that the blueprint, in theory, is here to serve the better of everyone. But as we know, this implication is going to be far-reaching, because any school under-enrolled under three fifty is going to have a problem. But as it relates to charters in the absence of facility funding, this is going to create a significant amount of, of problems for the nonprofit sector.
Thank you so much. Ms. James, we appreciate you being here and providing that testimony. And we will be, be discussing that. And so I urge you to stay around. Thank you so much. Appreciate this testimony.
Thank you, guys, for hearing me, and I'm sorry for the poor connection tonight, but thank you for listening. And I know that Prince George's County will do the right thing, so if you have any questions, comments, or otherwise, thank you.
All right. So thank you. We're now moving into discussion, item three point O. So at this point, we are going to have an update on transportation implementation and safe passages, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Coleman and his team and our special guest. Thank you.
So thank you so much for that, Board Member Adam Stafford. We seem to be having some difficulty with Director Cunningham and Lieutenant Commander Gomez getting on the link. I've been trying to work behind the scenes to make sure that they receive the link via email and that they can access it. There seems to be some breakdown where they're not able to either receive it, or they're not getting on.
Okay. Ravelle, are you able to support in that?
Yes, this is my first time hearing that, but I will work on it.
Okay, fantastic. And so, Dr. Coleman, did you want to, I know we have to do a, a switch here. Did we want to switch presentations while we wait for now? Would that work with what you're?
I, I believe so, because I don't want to delay and take people's time. So if we could just defer for a moment while we work out the connection, that'd be great.
Okay, great.
Chair Adam Stafford, our Vice Chair has arrived.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Vice Chair Walker.
You're welcome. You're not waiting on me, are you?
No.
Okay.
Right now, we, yeah, right now, we're waiting for our guests to receive the link. We're just waiting a few moments as they enter into the space. Thank you so much, everyone.
Chair, we just resent it, so if, let me know if they have not gotten it.
We'll wait another minute or so here, and then we'll just begin with any transportation updates we can give or safe passage updates as we await their arrival. So just wait another minute or so here. Thanks, everyone.
Chair. And can we ask Dr. Coleman to update us? Have they gotten the link? Do we know?
Director Cunningham did receive the link. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I think he's having some difficulty getting communication from the police department.
He's here. He's here now. Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. Dr. Coleman, if you want to introduce our guest and kind of set us up for this section, that would be great. Thank you.
I will. I am a little concerned because our police department partner, who confirmed for this afternoon, I don't know that we have them on the call, but certainly I will introduce where we are. The school system, as we know, collaborates and is in regular communication and partnership with the Prince George's County Police Department with respect to pedestrian safety. Here this afternoon is Director of Safety and Security Services, Mr. Gary Cunningham, and we are hopeful that we'll have Deputy Commander Katina Gomez with the Prince George's County Police Department. She is here, or scheduled, to provide information to the board and the public on the topic of pedestrian safety to and from school. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Cunningham at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I have been in collaboration with the police department in regards to this program and initiative. We do plan to meet tomorrow morning to discuss where our parts begin to end. We've designated points of contact each of the six schools to include one of the administrative staff, assigned by the principal, and the lead member of our safety and security staff. So we are ready, willing, and able to assist in any way possible.
Wonderful. So as we await our, our other guests to join us as well, and I have my colleagues, Vice Chair Harris and Board Member Rout, this will be a great time for us to talk a little bit about how we're working in partnership with our county council members and other board members on the Safe Passages Project, and how people can support. I had a great opportunity to head out there this week to be a part of it, and it's, it's a wonderful initiative. So Board Member Rout or Dr. Harris, if you'd like to share a brief overview, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, there is power in just people's presence with just adults being able to be encouraging to the young people that walk through the Prince George's County community. And Board Member Brandon Jackson, in partnership with Chair Ivy and Council Member Crystal Ordieaga, developed a partnership with Council Member Anthony Tillman on a volunteer operation that's going on, and it began on Monday, April fifteenth, and it's between the hours of two and then extended until four PM at or around. And the crux of the program is to really provide just eyes on, just extra eyes, extra ears. There was a, a, there was a, a, a volunteer orientation where they provided uniforms, which are these purple T-shirts, directions on how, how just to remain safe, don't engage in any type of altercation or anything, but just be a presence, be positive, encourage our young people, remind them to do their homework. You know, there's power in community coming out, and this is a true force of just, you know, people just tired of what's going on right now in our communities. And, you know, we can't wait on extra bodies or extra systems, or what police department or what school staff is going to help. You know, we, we, we want to all come together. And so what I need as a partner and as, as a, as one of the leaders, you know, supporting this Safe Passage Project as a, as just a Safe Passage Advocate. I've been that since serving on the city council. It's just, you know, publicity of this. Like, if there's, can we have a briefing with your senior staff during their commands that they are, you know, when they are interacting with community members, to give them the link? Like, this is just so easy, this is so low-hanging. And like, even with our school system, how can we partner more to get the word out about just this amazing program? Thanks so much for sharing your screen.
Thank you so much. Dr. Harris, if you'd like to add anything to that.
Yeah, I will. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think my colleague, Ms. Rout, explained the program very well. We're excited to have so many volunteers participate within the first few days of the program. I know at Sulu High School, one of the schools in District Seven, we had, I think, six volunteers out there on the first day. And so we're excited to, to see the, the, the impact that we can have just on that area directly. Other schools within District Seven expanded to Andrew Jackson. We're trying to include Samuel P. Massey as well within that. But, but like my colleagues are saying, we need more volunteers. We need folks to just come and, again, put eyes on the situation. If you, if it's, you know, two to four, and you can only stay two to three or three to four, just a small piece of your time really helps in this. We want to make sure that individuals are present. We, we believe that presence is, is one of the, the highest deteriorating factors to some things that happen outside the schoolhouse. It could, it could potentially save lives. It could potentially move our folks in the right direction. So if, if you do have the time, we encourage you to volunteer. We had a great time at the training over the weekend. Like, like she said, we did get uniforms and shirts. We had great icebreakers, icebreaker that I've never played before, but it was, it was a grand time, getting our volunteers together and on the same page to, again, help us to move forward as a community. So I'm excited for the work that our colleague Brandon Jackson, Brandon Jackson has put together as a representative for the board, so thank you to him for that, as well as our county, county council members and our, and Commissioner Tillman from District Eight. So thank you all for that, and, and again, please sign up to volunteer.
Thank you. I'm going to go to you next, Chair McInnes Murray, but again, it's so easy to volunteer. I went out there in between meetings this weekend, and I was pretty amazed by what I saw. You know, there, these are some dangerous corners that even working with high school students, they have to be reminded about safety, how to look both ways and get off your, 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 your pass on your crossing the street, talking to parents, you know, about not speeding through intersections, and just the presence alone caused a lot of people to stop and think. And so I really appreciate colleagues for putting this together. All my colleagues, I think, we should all volunteer. But then also, this is a, a building throughout the year where, you know, several of our colleagues have passed budget amendments to support safe passages, Jocelyn Rout, Dr. Harris, Board Member Pamela Boozer Struthers, and then also, we have had, you know, several community meetings about safe passage. So as we said, this is a community effort. Chair McInnes Murray, and then we're going to move into some transportation updates. Thank you so much.
Yes, real quick, can you remind the public of the schools? You said six schools. Can you give those names so that they will have those?
You got a chair you want me to?
So I guess. Yes.
Yes, so Sulu High School, Andrew Jackson Academy, Bladensburg High School is one of them, Charles Herbert Flowers. What are the last two? Is it, is James Madison one?
I don't have that down, but.
I'm forgetting the last.
Board Member Rout for District Four, you were about to say?
Yes, District Four, Bladensburg High School on Fifty-seventh Avenue and Flowers High School.
Yes. Chair Adam Stafford, maybe we could post it on our website for Obama so that the parents will know where to go to assist the students. That's helpful, and this is a great program, and thank you, guys, for all the work that you've done. Appreciate it.
And the last two are Largo High School and Central High School.
Wonderful.
Indian Central. Okay.
Come on out, Lou.
All right, and you know, I also want to shout out the Ardwood-Ardmore Civic Association for piloting this work, and that's where a lot of this inspiration came from, so shout out to them. Thank you so much, everyone. So we're going to move forward now to talk a little bit about our transportation updates, and we're eager to hear from the operations team and getting a, an update of how the implementation is happening. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you so much. And again, thank you for this opportunity to talk about our transportation updates. So first off, our community information sessions are underway. We started that process this past Monday in Dr. Dr. Lolita Walker's district, and we'll be moving throughout each district over the next two weeks. We invite parents to come out and share their feedback, provide their questions so that we can really have one-to-one engagements about our transportation prioritized recommendations that are set for implementation beginning school year twenty-four, twenty-five. We do want to note that one of the sessions will be in-person but also livestreamed. That is coming this Thursday, April eighteenth, so that's tomorrow, and each session is from six PM to seven thirty. So we're looking forward to community engagement. Tonight, we are at Hyattsville Middle School, and then we'll be moving on to Booyah High School tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Again, that livestream session is for those who may not be able to attend in person, but still want to hear the information and participate, so we look forward to that. We are working hard as a transportation team to provide the promised deliverables for the upcoming Board of Education meeting on April twenty-fifth, and then next Thursday. First among that list are the finalized bell time changes. We know and have heard very clearly that our community is, is excited to hear this information, anxious to hear this information, and we are anxious to provide it. We are working in our transportation department very hard, and also with our third parties, vetting the information, working through the weekends to ensure that the information that is provided next week will be accurate and will certainly yield the efficiencies that we are looking to gain. Another deliverable for next Thursday's board meeting is really to provide additional details on opportunities for community engagement as we continue this ongoing improvement process. Because again, we want to note to the community that this is the first phase of a multi-phase process. Prince George's County Public Schools is one of the ten largest transportation, student transportation systems in the entire United States of America. So it is a very complex, very large organization that doesn't pivot on a dime. And so these initial recommendations that are being prioritized for implementation are a first and important step in a multi-step process. And so it's really important for us to lay that out because there is a, almost like an inclination, a natural inclination to believe that we implement these five and everything's solved, and everything's fixed. But that would be, that would not be accurate. The, we were given twelve recommendations from the formative team for a reason, because there are multiple areas that must be touched and improved upon, and we are up for the challenge and excited about it. So this first step are the first five recommendations. And so over the next several years, we will be implementing, refining, implementing, refining, getting feedback from our community stakeholders, refining some more, and making certain that we're measuring the data around implementation and providing that data to our communities so that they also can make a determination about the progress that we've made. So we're really excited about that. And then lastly, we want to make certain that next Thursday that we are, or that we're clear about the communication tools that are being utilized to keep our community informed. And so that is happening throughout these community information sessions, and we also want to reinforce that at every, every opportunity, quite frankly, with the public, because we know that this is a change. We know that this is a shift. And that can be scary for families, but we, and we're cognizant of that, and we are going to walk hand in hand with our community as we move through this improvement process. Formative, the last point, our formative team, which is the third-party transportation consulting firm that conducted the initial audit, will be in person at the upcoming board meeting. So we are excited because they are based out of Minnesota, and so we're excited to have them back in Prince George's County Public Schools to be able to respond to any questions and provide additional color around the process. And provide additional color uh, around the process and and where we are uh, uh, with our implementation of our prioritized recommendations. Uh, so with that, I will close and um, and ready for any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. The floor is open for questions. Um, I know I have a question. A few questions to start off with, but if anyone would like to go before me. Okay, um. So I'm gonna start Board Member Route, uh, Board Member Harris, and then I'll go if there's no one else.
Yes, thank you uh, for that update. It was very comprehensive. I just wanted to understand the decision behind these five particular. Um, recommendations that are being worked on um, this academic year through next year, right? I wanted to understand what was the methodology of determining. These are the five. Were they the easiest, like low, most low hanging? Were they the most cost effective? Where, can you help us understand the decision tree?
Sure, I definitely understand and appreciate that question. Thank you so much. So foundationally. Uh, the bell time changes can be looked at as the base. Um, we, it, the, the audit findings showed that we had. An overabundance, an overconcentration of bell times that were situated at seven forty-five A M or earlier. Um, I, uh, approximately twelve hundred trips that were at the seven forty-five bell time or earlier. On any given day, we don't have more than eight hundred to eight hundred fifty drivers at any one time tier. Able uh, available to service our children. And so if you could imagine what that looks like, a full twenty percent. Uh, of our bus routes are unassigned on any given day before a driver calls out sick or has. Uh, vacation day, um, and and that creates a cascading effect of inefficiency. From the first tier to the second tier to the third tier. And so when formative at the last board meeting talked about the synergy that we gain. From the recommendations working together, but starting with that foundation of the bell times, um, that is what is pivotal. And so it became very clear to us from the recommendations that uh, any improvement or or to move us on the road to significant improvement in efficiency. It had to include a bell time balancing first between the tiers. So ideally, we wouldn't have more than eight hundred to eight hundred fifty trips on any one tier. Because that's the total number of drivers that we have available at any one time. So that's kind of that fundamental piece. And then the other pieces like uh, 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 walk zone audits as an example. When we look at that as an opportunity, we have approximately eighty-five thousand students who drop, ride our buses on any given day. Twenty-two thousand students are impacted or given a bus who live inside the walk zone. So in other words, they are, they are within the mile and a half if they're elementary or two miles if they're uh, secondary. And that's a third of our ridership. And so if we're looking at gaining efficiencies, we have to look at the over prescription of bus stops. Uh, if we're going to make any appreciable gains. So that's kind of the thought process that we went through. Uh, we also needed to look and 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 through the the collaboration with partners. If I could just add one more comment, uh, through the collaboration, there have been focus groups uh, with multiple stakeholders, uh, including our union partners. Our, our, um, excuse me, our teacher union, our teacher uh, participants, our parent groups. Our student partners, our um, administrators. And all, and all, in in addition to interviews, in addition to the uh, transportation team. And from looking at all of that information, we were able to identify those areas that one would provide the biggest benefit. And two, not represent too large of a change for our community.
Thank you so much, Board Member Harris, and then Chair McInnes Murray.
Thank you for the time. Um, so I will say thank you to Dr. Coleman and his staff for coming out to Drew Freeman. Last night, um, it was a great session. We had uh, a good number of people in attendance, got some good questions around the transportation plan and the implementation of that plan. And one thing that I would bring to the attention of your team, Dr. Coleman, is I know. You said tomorrow, the Hyattsville session is is live streamed? For clarification.
Tonight is, tonight is Hyattsville and it's in person only. Tomorrow is at Bowie High School and that will be live streamed.
Okay, is that the only one that's live streamed?
Yes, sir, it is. So, um, from what I understand from communications, they wanted to have at least one opportunity. For families who just can't make it in person to still be able to participate.
Okay. And a thought I have, and I think some of my other colleagues might have this thought as well, is moving toward the the latter sessions, which I believe. Um, Walker Mill and Eleanor Roosevelt are last on the list. I might have flipped those two. Um, should we try to earmark one of those as live streamed as well? Because that'll follow the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, where we'll be discussing. The bell times specifically, and parents might not be able to come out to either Walker Mill or even the Saturday session, which is Roosevelt. Um, so one of those might be an ideal time to have it live streamed or even recorded, just so they can follow up on that. I think. That is something that I think Vice Chair Walker might have brought about the, at the board meeting. Um, but I have, it is something that I have heard also within, within my community.
Sure. Thank you so much for that question. I will definitely take that recommendation back. Um, to the uh, Communications Division. Uh, the Department of Community and Family Engagement actually is the coordinators of these community information sessions. So I'll get that information to them for consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. Uh, my question is around bus drivers, and I don't think you have addressed it yet tonight, and you may. But I believe that the last session we had on Thursday night. You said that some bus drivers may need to do three routes. Help me to see what that looks like, because I know in the past, we've had problems with them doing two routes. So I'm I'm concerned about that, and I'm concerned, uh, do we have that flexibility to do that real time?
Oh, thank you so much, Board Chair, for that question. Super important. So just to make sure that everyone understands. What we have currently is a three-tier system, but it's just, it's just not efficiently set up. So we have thirteen bell times in the morning currently, and we have seventeen bell times in the afternoon. That's currently, with the bell time adjustments that we are moving forward with for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. We will have three distinct bell times. So we're gonna move from thirteen in the morning to three. In the afternoon, we're gonna go from seventeen to six. And the reason that it's six is that elementary school is is shorter than than middle, than secondary school. Elementary school is six hours and ten minutes of instructional time. Middle, uh, secondary school is six hours and forty minutes. And so there's a gap in time that creates six ends, end times instead of start, uh, uh, three end times. And so if you could imagine the power that we will have, w- once we have our A M set up where it's seven thirty start. Eight thirty start and nine thirty start, that our system is designed where most of our drivers, the objective is to give them three routes. That's the objective. So that's not an exception. That is what we are trying to do. Where a driver starts their day at, say, six in the morning, leaving the lot, they're able to get to their first school by seven thirty. To, or or to run their route and drop the children off by seven thirty. And then they'll have an hour buffer in between seven thirty and eight thirty. To then make it to that second school, to run the route and get to that second school by by eight thirty. And then they'll have an hour in between to be able to pick up, run the third route, and then get those children to school by nine thirty. And so that is uh, the, the efficiency that we're looking to gain. If you have thirteen different start times, there isn't enough time for the driver to drop off. Run the next route and get them to school in time. But if you have three bell times with an hour in between each. That is a, you have a much uh, stronger likelihood of having the time for the driver to make it from one place to the next within the hour. And then within uh, 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 an hour to make it to the last stop. So I hope that that makes sense. Um, that's the efficiency gain that we are looking to get. Um, and drivers are designed, the position is designed. For them to service all three tiers.
Uh, thank you so much. And if I can make one final comment. I hope that you're going to practice this this summer. Because we all think that things work well until we're doing that work. And then you hit obstacles. So we need to have some contingency plans. So after you practice, please let this board know, uh, what the glitches that you see. And how you are addressing them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Chair.
Thank you. That was actually one of my questions. Um, so I'm gonna I ask a few questions here, and then if folks want to take a second round, we can. So I wanted to know, so so I'm gonna um, ask all of my questions and then, you know, have, we'll have time to, to reply. So I want to know if in the plan that you'll present to us, if you will include what type of s- system pressure testing? You'll be doing when, where, how many people, you know, how will we do a pressure test this summer? Um, just so that we can understand, um, kind of the. Uh. What to expect in the fall, if in in understanding that you have to expect the unexpected, but just knowing, you know. Maybe how many pressure tests you plan on doing. How, um, are we going to in the engage in feedback loops from the sessions? So for example, are you all, you know, giving out like a Q R code at the session where people are getting input and then taking that input and then. Putting it into some kind of data, like how are you all, you know, engaging in some type of feedback link for us to, you know, on the twenty-fifth? Kind of understand where the, what what you're hearing in these sessions or how that's impacting your decision-making. Um, you know, I wanted to go back to some of our questions earlier this year about. The dashboard for late buses. I mean, I do imagine that we still will need to have that refined communication tool. With families to let them know kind of where buses are. Um, so maybe if you can talk a little bit about that. Um, and then one thing that I'm concerned about that maybe you can speak to is the opt-in election and sort of the. Equitable practice of opt-in. So, um, you know, for example, like when this has happened in other industries like. Medicaid, opt-in, maybe, maybe Medicare, opt-in, but. In other instances, often vulnerable populations can be left out or can miss. Like time cutoffs or because of so many other different factors. And so I'm wondering. Is, is there, is the Equity Office involved in, you know, the way that that's going to be rolled out? I'm also wondering, um, if you all can share with the board. Some of your research around later start times for older students. Um, cause I know that that's a question that has come up a lot on my end. And I think that that would be beneficial to share with the community. So maybe like, um. In the toolkit, putting like a research sheet that says like what our research base is on why the times are the way they are. Um, and then just a thought, because there is so much communication, there's so many people. I I I don't know if you guys have considered maybe like having transportation ambassadors, like people in the community that are. Really strong voices and having them be a part of a hub that disseminates important information. So those are some of my questions and thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much for those questions. Uh, I'll try my best to kind of run through. I try to take notes. Uh, so system pressure testing. Um, so the first piece that I will say around that is, and and kind of to uh, Board Chair McInnes Murray's point as well. Uh, we conduct dry runs uh, as a part of every year. Uh, once the trips are actually developed based on where the students who've registered and are eligible for bus transportation live. And so those dry runs are, have to happen in August after the um, uh, bus drivers select the routes. That they want to uh, uh, service for that particular year. And those dry runs will give us a better idea of what the coverage looks like of the um, thousands of routes that must. Or trips that must be covered in any given year and where the gaps are. And then I, we have to work as a scheduling and routing team to optimize. Uh, those routes. And that's an every-year process. Now, the one thing that I will just kind of add as a, as a plug to the public and to the board. Uh, is that an important piece is to, is we need to continue to encourage our families. Who know they're gonna send their children to PGCPS in the fall to register as early as possible. Uh, every year, we have situations where thousands upon thousands of our children are registered late. Uh, this is after the, the transportation uh, uh, kind of blueprint has already been laid out. And then we have to scramble to, to, to re-figure the trips, the routes. Uh, to accommodate families that need service. And so we'll have one set of efficiencies at the third week of Au- of August. But after the thousands of people register, now we have to go back and deal with those efficiencies. And they all aren't dealt with by the start of school. So it can look like we weren't prepared for the start of school, but we were. There was just a crush of people who then registered uh, a- at that eleventh hour, which causes transportation. To then go back and re-figure routes and runs. So I just want to encourage, and we will be doing that through communications, encouraging families. To move that process forward and register as early as possible. The question around feedback loops, uh, certainly we heard that loud and clear from the last board meeting that. That community engagement and hearing from our community members is an important part of the improvement process, and we are committed to that. Uh, so at the upcoming board meeting, we're going to be talking about a clear definition of what those opportunities look like for community engagement. And that includes feedback. So as an example, each of the community information sessions that we are having this week and next week. Includes a Q R code at the end as an exit ticket where families can provide us feedback. And we're actually going to be providing that data from the community engagement session surveys to the board on the twenty-fifth. And then we're gonna continue to provide those surveys uh, uh, throughout this process. Just like we're gonna continue with community information sessions, we're gonna continue uh, with uh, focus groups, we're gonna continue with the advisories. So those things are going to be an ongoing loop, uh, because it's important. Uh, where are our buses? Uh, and making sure that we're optimizing that piece. Again, we're working as one of the prioritized recommendations, kind of to Miss Route's point. We've heard very clearly the challenges with tracking our buses. So that had to be prioritized as a recommendation. Uh, our messaging around uh, Stop Finder, location of the bus, and quite frankly, improving our ability to track the buses. Because part of the delay that we run into when families call trying to find out where the bus is. Is that we have to go through too many steps on the transportation side to actually locate the bus. And so the first thing that needs to happen is we need to reduce the number of doubled runs. Right? And that is tied directly to bell times, that's tied directly to bus stop consolidation. All of these work together because no app that's available that we know of can track two runs on the same bus. And so the first thing that has to be done, you have to reduce the number of doubles. To do that, you have to give our, our, our transportation. Uh, drivers an opportunity to have one route for one trip, or one trip at a time. And then we can work on the backend pieces. Uh, the equitable, equitable practice around opt-in. So this is an important point. I don't know how long I have, but this is an important point. You definitely raise a great point around the, 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 the dangers, I'll call it dangers. Of going to an opt-in. And so that is why we have selected the more conservative opt-out. Every child who is eligible for a bus, according to the criteria, will receive a bus. Just like they did last year, just like they did five years ago, just like they did twenty years ago. There is no change. All right. So there's no question around equity going with the opt-out. The opt-out is simply us asking. Do you need a bus next year? If the answer is no, please let us know. Cause that way we can remove that bus from the, from the trip. And then after that, that makes a more efficient route, right? So if I have ten bus stops, the parents tell us that three of those bus stops aren't needed because they're not gonna be any children there. I'm driving my child to school. Then now, instead of a bus stopping there, ten ti- you know, every day. With ten stops and three of them aren't needed, we can reconfigure that trip where now we only have seven stops. And that makes it much more efficient and faster for the uh, bus to get to school. And so that's really what we're looking for, is simply a voluntary opt-out. Just let us know if you don't need the bus. There is no danger to a family. If something changes, circumstances changes and and change, and they now need a bus. All they have to do is let us know. As long as they still are eligible for that bus, meet the same criteria, we will put the bus back. So there's no danger in a family losing a bus. You don't have to fear that if you opt out, that's it for the year. That's not it at all. Um, so that's the, the first step. Uh, and we're trying to take a conservative posture like that. With all of these recommendations, um, uh, to minimize the impact on our community. And then lastly, the research around uh, later start times for uh. And then lastly, the research around uh later start times for uh secondary students. That is definitely one of many, many, many factors um that had to be considered with respect to uh bell time changes. Uh, another factor, or in fact, just list a few of them. The impact of uh if we shift in elementary school a certain amount of time, the impact on before and after care. And and will vendor managed care be impacted? Uh, impact on the availability of crossing guards. The impact on the availability of students to participate in dual enrollment, in work-study, uh in their own jobs that they might have just to help put food on the table. The availability of older children to receive younger siblings after school. Uh, impact on uh, well, you get the idea. So in addition to kind of the developmental needs of students, we've had to look at a number of different areas um to ensure that we weren't tipping too far in any one direction. And quite frankly, that is why we selected the very, very modest and not aggressive bell time adjustments that we selected. Uh, the the ninety percent of our schools are slated to move either no no time at all or move fifteen minutes or less. And that's by design because we don't want to upset the apple cart and 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 send people into a space where it's just too big of a change uh along with all the other uh shifts that we're doing. So I I hope that addresses the questions. I do have to add one last note. Um, I know we have a second round. I have the community information session actually starting in about seven minutes. Um, and so I want to be be respectful of the folks who are here um uh for that session. So I'll I'll run until the very end, but I definitely have to get away to that meeting at six.
Thank you so much. And you know, as a former principal, uh Dr. Coleman and Director, I know that you're looking at all that we're doing and seeing the curricular opportunities and some of the challenges that you all are solving. So I would love, 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 love if students could possibly be involved in some of the problem solving that you all are engaging in, the logistical challenges, uh, the math going behind this, the research, you know, if there's any way, especially seniors, I just see this as a huge project-based learning opportunity. Um, I'm gonna go to um Board Member Route for a second round. Harris, um um Board Member Mickens Murray and Board Member Route, if you can speak to the registration secretary issue as in response. I know that's something that you focused on in sharing your budget amendment. That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So I'm just concerned, um, you know, when there are different people that write us. Um, there have been um suggestions made that there have been union groups that have not been um particularly talked to about the change. So I wanted to know more about that. I also wanted to know more about the ten percent that will be affected by the change, right? I know that's a small margin. I know ninety percent of people will not be affected. But for the ten percent, what if, you know, I just wanted to know, what are some areas that the parents can expect? Can they petition for a transfer? What I mean, what, how was, how was their perspective? And then lastly, I just want to thank you and your team. Um, you know, I want to thank the superintendent as well um and your team for really hearing me because I I said at the beginning of the school year about this process that my dear mom went through in LAUSD when we had to opt out. Like, that was a whole thing. Like in our household, like, I gotta figure out where you're going after school to see if you opt out. So thank you for considering that. It looks like that that one stuck, right? So with, you know, there was science behind it, I'm sure. It wasn't just me. But I just want to thank you for that as well, because you know, that that just means that you're listening, you and your team are listening to the board. Thanks.
Sure, you're welcome. And um to your questions, thank you so much for those questions. Um, so our union membership, I want to make sure that that I kind of frame that, right? Uh, when if we hear from a couple, right, I don't know how many, but some union membership who say that they have not been heard, that doesn't mean the union hasn't been heard. Uh, that may be that that one member or those that group of members uh may not either know the the communications that have been ongoing, or they themselves wanted to be more involved in the process and were not. I'm not sure which, but what I can say is that our administration meets regularly with the union leadership in multiple, on multiple occasions. Um, and those discussions are with union leadership uh as representatives. And in addition to that, we have conversations with uh members of those unions directly. And so there are multiple opportunities for that to occur, and that is occurring. So I do want to reassure uh you and the public around that. Uh, the ten percent change, I definitely thank you so much for that question. I do want to clarify that. So as we've stated over and over again, the estimated change for that ninety percent, first, let me start back with that one more time. That ninety percent is comprised of the estimated projected, right? It's being finalized now. So projected uh thirty-three percent of our schools won't have any change at all in their in their bell time. Fifty-seven percent of our schools are expected to have a change of fifteen minutes or less. Seven percent of our schools are expected to have a change of sixteen minutes up to thirty minutes. And then that final three percent, and that's why that's the smallest number, that three percent, because we know that that's the most dynamic change that has to happen. That is between thirty-one minutes up to sixty minutes. So there will be no change for any school greater than sixty minutes. And we are estimating, projecting that those schools that are impacted with a thirty-one minute up to sixty-minute change will represent no more than three percent.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go to Dr. Harris and then um Board Member Mickens Murray.
Thanks, Dr. Coleman. I know you got to run here. Um, I know you and I have talked at length about um the backend of Stop Finder and specifically how um the challenges of the software, the limitations within those softwares. Um, so I wanted to know, we can, I guess, have another conversation since you have to run here. Um, how does the implementation of these recommendations play an impact to a stop? Whether it's reducing those redundancies, whether it's talking about how we're utilizing um patches and third-party vendors. Um, will the implementations, I guess, I guess scaling the scaling back the implementation into the new bus routes? Does the still the three bus routes present a problem for Stop Finder?
The three bus routes or bell times?
No, no, the but so you say you want you want to limit each bus to three runs.
Correct, yes.
Finders limitation is less than three runs.
No, no, no. Okay, I I I appreciate that. Thank you. I think I get it. So the the inefficiencies that we're dealing with with Stop Finder, first off, you mentioned at the at the the last board meeting or the board meeting before that, uh that you really called out the fact that our IT team uh is working with our transportation team around the Stop Finder app. And so uh 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 Chief Zuckerman, uh as well as Director Baldwin are working in concert with one another to ensure to to do another diagnostic, quite frankly, uh of the app. Uh, to make sure that uh there's no functionality challenges that are bigger than we may have realized. So that's one piece that is ongoing uh as we look at improvements. The second piece is really structural, and I kind of alluded to it a little earlier, that there isn't an app that we know of that has the function functional ability to track more than one route per a run, one trip per bus at a time. And so that greatest efficiency that we can gain in being able to utilize the app efficiently and for it to work properly is to fix the structural inefficiencies in our in what we're asking our drivers to do. Uh, and that will by itself eliminate many of the double runs and eliminate many of the inefficiencies. Now, we are certainly uh 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 in a space that the Stop Finder app and and the functionality that it presents or the challenges it presents. There are many links in the chain, as you know, in a in a technology situation. And so we're having to look very hard at hardware, we're having to look very hard at software. We're having to look very hard at staff training. We're having to look very hard at how our end users are using the app because we found that some end users don't set up the geo alerts, which doesn't provide them with the functionality that the functionality that they're looking for. And so um, it really is, that's what I mean by an improvement process. Um, there isn't a one and done fix for any of these uh challenges. Uh, and so I really want to level set expectations that, you know, that nothing is clean about improvement. It is messy work. Uh, it is, it is, um, it is stops and starts. It is, um, uh, it's real, it's tangible. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, if you're doing the right work and stay committed to it, it will yield a a beautiful result. And so we're committed to that.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Coleman. I know you need to go and be respectful of your time. You can respond to this question on the uh on the twenty fifth. Register people to register children to go to school. I know Miss Route put in an amendment to ensure that we had secretaries in those schools. So what we need assurance of is that there will be registers in those schools over the summer. Because the parents can't be blamed if we are not providing the resource. So let us know next week how that's being managed in that ninety uh ten percent of those schools that we really need them to be present in.
Very good. Thank you so much for that, Board Chair Mickens Murray. And please, I hope that that did not me mentioning that as a fact is not uh in it, I'm not in any way casting blame or aspersion on our community uh around their registration. I I hope that wasn't conveyed because that wasn't the intent.
I'm looking forward.
Okay, you're good. So yes, I do certainly uh 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 know uh that the administration, pupil accounting and school boundaries, human resources, operations ha- and Superintendent House have all had robust conversations about our uh registrars being made twelve months uh starting this year. Uh, and so that conversation is happening and certainly we can bring uh confirmation back to the next board meeting. All right, with that, I'm going to run. I'm about four minutes late. I appreciate um and and I look forward to seeing you next week.
Looking forward to the update.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, we're moving now to item three point two CIP updates. Um, with the public-private partnership P three, Mr. Washington.
Thank you. Uh, yes, um, good afternoon, Everett Will. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, the the update is is quick. We are uh finalizing and still in the um exclusive negotiating agreement period uh with the developer. Uh, the updates are, uh, a project labor agreement has been signed by the developer and the uh building trades. Uh, they are uh moving ahead to finalize their pricing, uh which we um per contract. Uh, they're supposed to give us uh by mid-May, um at which point uh we will move to get the uh uh the project closed, uh pending state review. Um, and that's uh really uh where we are right now. Uh, state review really comes down to affordability. Um, and with recent changes uh in uh statute and uh legislation uh with the the county is now responsible for paying uh the full portion of the counties um and our our portion of availability payment. Um, they now have uh to weigh in uh on on affordability and what that looks like. Uh, but that that's the update that we have. Uh, we're still uh tracking uh to hopefully close this this summer uh and to uh to move forward uh with delivering to schools. And I will uh open it up uh for any um questions.
Thank you so much. I want to go to Board Member Route, and then I'll have one question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Washington, for that update. I'm so happy to hear that the PLAs, uh, the PLA has been signed. That's just, you know, a great you know, it's it's just the right thing to do, you know, looking out for the people um who need us the most, right? Who are uh who who have been disenfranchised. Like, I'm just so proud of us um that we were able to do that. Looking forward to hearing about affordability. Um, I just wanted to know more, um. I just wanted to check in just to make sure. Are we on schedule for everything being finalized? I know you were stating that there was a risk of us losing. Um, you know, a portion of the funding and the money that's already been invested. If we're late, are we on schedule?
So um part of the um update um per the statute, uh they remove the uh the the time uh horizon and the deadline. Uh, so there's no drop dead date at the end of June. Um, however, we do have a drop dead date because we have a schedule to meet, uh because we will have schools that we are committing to deliver uh by certain school years. And so uh while we don't have a drop dead date, we do have a uh uh a date that we need to be moving out, which would probably be late summer, uh just to make sure that the schools are delivered on time. Uh, so we are on time. Uh, the biggest uh timeline that we have right now, as I said, is the state. Uh, we uh it did whatever we agree to locally is great, but the IAC has uh final veto power. So that's where our focus has been in our conversations. Uh, right now, we are targeting to get this uh finalized by um uh, I think they have their uh next commission meeting, June thirteenth. Uh, that is the date that we are are planning to to move to get our stuff in. There will be a memorandum of understanding that the board will need to execute uh uh prior to that. So the May ninth meeting, we're working to get that finalized now. Um, that is the four-party agreement that we've been negotiating for three years now with MSA, IAC and the county.
Okay, thank you so much. I have a follow-up question. Um, so with uh the timeline, um, do we estimate that we will be on time? Well, that we will um that we've communicated with all of our stakeholders to include our parent groups about any of um the move outs, the move out plans, have we executed any communication strategy?
Have, we have identified those schools that will need to move that are impacted. We have had community meetings uh with those schools. Uh, further, uh, we are uh finalizing as part of this, we had to move some school delivery dates. And so we are moving that the next round of our community meetings are in May uh with the rest of the schools uh to talk about the uh transition, construction period and delivery of the school.
Thank you. If I can be invited to those meetings, I'd be, um, I would like to be invited. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, if there are no further questions, we're going to move into the item three point three internal audit report.
Sorry, Chair Adam Stafford, just one one question quickly.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Washington, you talked about there not being a drop dead day at the end of the June um anymore, but and you say you believe that our move out date is the end of this this summer is what you said.
Yes, so so for the construction. So we have two schools that are committed to be delivered by uh July twenty twenty-six. Uh, that would be Templeton and Margaret Brent. And so to ensure that they are delivered on time, they contractor schedule calls for them to start mobilization at the end of the summer. And so that's the while we don't have a drop dead statutory date, we do have a uh a construction uh date that uh we want to meet as much as possible because after that, you know, we they they can file claims that we slowed them down, all of those good things. And so uh, right now, that's the date that we're really driving is to make sure that we are finished so that they can start their construction on time.
Okay, does there any, before that start date, is there any um uh procurement that goes into place, or is this just beer purely like um equipment that the vendors bring to the site? So how does that work?
It it's 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 whatever their process is. So our process and our procurement ends with, uh, it's a two-stage process. It's a commercial close on June thirteenth. Well, it's approval of the IAC. Then we cannot move until their minutes are published, which we expect to be a week later. So we would close probably June seventeenth closing, meaning that we would just commercially close, sign the contract, et cetera. Then the developer has a thirty-day window uh to complete their financing and which is known as financial close. Uh, right now, we are targeting that around July eighteenth and nineteenth. And at that point, they take uh responsibility for all of the school sites uh that are encompassed, all of the construction activities, all of the processes. It becomes the it it it's there then a project going forward. Um, and they handle all the procurements, submittals, et cetera. And they handle all the procurements, submittals, et cetera.
Got it. No, that's helpful, just those additional dates. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to item three point three internal audit report. Thank you, Mr. Washington, for the presentation.
No time, no problem. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Mr. Fitzpatrick, am I able to share my screen or will you hold the presentation?
Yes, you should be able to.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much and good, good evening. The Board Policy eighty three seventy three requires that the Internal Audit Office provide a quarterly report of its activities to the Board of Education. This report is our second quarterly report for FY twenty four and it covers the period October one, twenty twenty three through December thirty first, twenty twenty three and was issued to the Board and Superintendent on February eighth. This report included twenty two reports that were issued and this included an operational audit, twelve investigations and nine student activity fund audits. There were also one hundred and thirty four hotline reports received and reviewed for this period as well as two point two million dollars in funds received that were subjected to audit. The bus lot payroll practice follow up was an operations audit and it was a follow up to a prior two thousand eighteen audit of bus lot payroll practices. And this included a review of the payroll approval process and the procedures for allocating driver schedules, overtime, extra run, as well as this general payroll practice and payments to bus lot employees. The, the prior two thousand eighteen audit had five findings and there were seven audit recommendations made for improvement. In this follow up audit, we noted that there were two findings that were corrected or, or two recommendations that were implemented and fifteen that had not yet been implemented. And these findings were generally dealing with payroll and record keeping as well as internal controls over our payrolls. There were three additional findings. The first was internal controls over bus lot and attendance payrolls required improvement. We noted that overtime hours were, were all not always supported or there was lacking supporting documentation in these instances. Management did respond and they concurred with the finding and the recommendation. The next finding was the inadequate rec management system that requires improvement. Management also concurred with this finding. And then lastly, there was not sufficient evidence to confirm that the driver's hours of service complied with state requirements. Management did not concur with that finding. And the transportation director's response for concurrence, for concurrence included they would have an implementation plan that would be put forth beginning April twenty twenty four. The first three investigation reports that were issued was Laurel High School teacher emolument. And this was substantiated that a teacher had received compensatory emoluments without completing the work required because they were on administrative leave at that time. The next investigation was College Park Academy failure to enter grades timely. This was also substantiated and it was found that the teacher had not graded assignments and had added final grades and as well as left some assignments ungraded, which resulted in student grades being low at the end of the third quarter for certain students. The teacher was overlapping position in another county. This was an allegation that was substantiated that a teacher worked his second position during school hours as a county board commissioner. And there was no evidence of leave taken to attend these meetings. The next investigation was the White Hall Elementary School, school nurse time and attendance. It was substantiated that a nurse at White Hall Elementary School had not entered their time in Oracle and resulting in an over paid exceeding eleven thousand eight hundred dollars or two hundred and ninety four point five hours. Other next was Central High School finance, financial compensation withheld. It was substantiated that a staff member had not been reimbursed for school purchases and also had not received emolument pay for sponsoring student activities. However, it was also found that this teacher did not receive these payments because they had not received the principal's advance approval as required. Again, Central High School unauthorized fundraiser. This was a staff member that had conducted an unauthorized fundraiser and, and did not follow the required policies and procedures. And this allegation was also substantiated. And then I think these are the final two substantiated earnings. At Richelts Middle School, mismanagement of a fundraiser. The allegation was that an employee had mismanagement in fundraisers resulting in the, in the school having to pay the vendor three thousand dollars. This was an employee that had conducted a chocolate candy fundraiser without remitting the proceeds to the school. The principal then paid the overdue bill in order to satisfy the vendor. And Laurel High School Sherathon fundraiser alleged unfair mistreatment of participating students and possible financial mismanagement of the fundraiser. This is a fundraiser where senior students solicited online donations in order to defray the cost of their senior fees. This fundraiser had not been approved by the principal. This associate superintendent of high school directed the school to discontinue the fundraiser. Up to that point, students had solicited donations and were promised incentives based on the amount of donations raised. Those incentives were due to be paid by the vendor, but as of the date of the report had not been received. These three cases were not substantiated. Facility service based that the goods and services, Department of Capital Programs lead practices and printing and mail services payroll. The student activity fund audits that were conducted during this quarter when Park Middle School, Imagine Andrews, Imagine Foundations, Leidensburg, Taylor Hills, Northwestern High School, Thomas School, Elementary School, Oxenfield High School and G. James Goldson Middle School were all conducted. And this slide provides the total findings as well as the number of repeated findings. There were no significant findings regarding missing or theft of funds. This slide provides the hotline reporting. For the quarter, there were one hundred and thirty four hotline reports received. The most frequent issue reported is parent and community relations, followed by a school and office management as the second most frequent. These were the planned audits for the third quarter. But now that we are pretty much finished the third quarter, I will say that these were moved to the fourth quarter. They were began late in the third quarter, but because of other competing responsibilities, we did not complete these in the third quarter, but it's anticipated that they will be completed before the end of the fiscal year by June third. And that completes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Winston, for that presentation. Yes, I have two questions. Just in your, you know, observation of fundraising challenges, what do you think is the root cause? Like, this is a systemic challenge that we see, you know, every time we see an internal audit report. And I'm just wondering, just from your perspective, as someone that has had a close look at this, what do you view to be the root cause for the systemic challenge? Also, excuse me, the, I'm sorry, the last one, I didn't, I didn't get to get this on, then I'll turn it over to you. Sorry about that. If the hotline requests are seeming to be concentrated on parent and community relationships, you know, I'm wondering how closely we're working with the PCAC and the policy recommendations that they made to the Board of Education. I'd love to see if there is some cross collaboration that can happen there where you actually give the PCAC, you know, some overview. Doesn't have to be the specific raw data, but some overview of the types of hotline complaints. And the PCAC can really advise the board based on the policy recommendations they've already given us. Because it seems like there needs to be just some connection there. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome and thank you for those questions. I'll, I'll, I'll address your first question regarding fundraising. The, the common thing seen with the fundraisers are usually teachers who take it upon themselves to conduct these fundraisers outside of the policies and, and procedures. Oftentimes, it gets not learned until way after the fact of parent complaints. Maybe they did get, not get whatever the benefit was they were anticipating from the, the particular fundraiser. Principal often says that he also is, was, was not aware. I do know that, you know, ELRO, these, these, these cases are reported, are holding those teachers accountable in those instances, including restitution when, when, when it happens. So I, I think continued training, continue holding teachers accountable regarding fundraiser as well as just, just general vigilance as far as what's going on in your schools. The, the teachers, they're having the students conduct these fundraisers. So, you know, the students are involved, the parents are involved, but not until it's, it's over. So, you know, and my opinion, I, I think, you know, just continued accountability on part of, of teachers and, and those involved in, in unauthorized fundraisers.
Thank you. And you can address the second part with the PCAC maybe on my next round. But I guess just a follow up to that, you know, so it, I'm, this is to clarify. This is just for clarity and you can let me know after. But is the training just a presentation or is it like a module that they have to go through? Or is it scenario based? Because perhaps there needs to be an audit of the training. If, if even after people are attending the training, we're still seeing this pervasive issue. And then what are the consequences? And I'm just trying to get an understanding of that and you, we can share that answer a little bit later. I'm going to go to Chair McInnes Murray and Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. Mrs. Winston, could we look at slide nine, please? Could we pull that back up, slide nine? Okay, when I look at this slide and I see the repeated findings and it, it's like, in my mind, there is no progress. How often do you look at these same schools? Is, is there three month timeline, six months timeline? I'm trying to figure out what is the repeat finding and how often that repeat finding is.
Thank you for the question. So because we are, you know, two hundred plus schools, we are a team of seven auditors. We have a risk based approach as to how we prioritize school audits. So the risk factors involved, has there been a change in principal, a change in bookkeeper? Has there been prior findings of missing funds as well as a couple of other factors? So that's how we prioritize. However, I will say this year was the first year. And in fact, it was in response to concerns raised by the board that it was felt that we needed to go back and revisit schools more often. And so we did our first ever, and this will be a repeated effort with Student Activity Fund follow up audit, where we look at all of the audits that were issued for the, for that year. And then we specifically go to that school just for the purpose of reviewing those particular issues where there were repeated findings to see the state of remediation, to see if, in fact, there has been corrective action. Where there still has not been corrective action, we have, we have reported to the instructional director and that's just instructional director to get involved with that school and to, I guess, increase some accountability to help ensure that the next time we do a full audit, we can get closer to no repeated findings at all.
Okay, then my suggestion is in future reports, you have let the board know when the corrective actions have no responses. Because I think that's key to helping the organization understand that they need to be committed to the changes. So needs to be raised to the board if these corrective actions are not being adhered to. Okay?
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think I was next, I'll jump in here. Ms. Winston, thank you for your presentation. My question stems from, forgot which slide it was, so bear with me. It's the slide regarding the bus lot payroll. So I think it was near the top, maybe three or four. Remind me again, the reason for the follow up for the, for the two thousand eighteen audit is because this audit happens every, how many years? Or what, what was the reason for the follow up here?
So this was a two thousand, two thousand eighteen audit. And again, as part of our risk, again, a risk assessment, we identified that was in, 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 as you can probably assess, there's been a lot of discussion around transportation. And so as part of our risk assessment, we identified this as one of the operations audit that we needed to do a follow up audit on. So it was done in two thousand eighteen. Originally, we had hoped to do it in twenty twenty. But as you know, with the pandemic and then, you know, it, 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 there was a while before we were back even using transportation. So this was the first opportunity where we felt like Where we felt like we had enough data that we could do a full follow-up audit. And uh, so that's how it, it, it came on our radar as a, as a high-risk area.
Okay, so this isn't something that was sitting on the table since twenty eighteen. This is something that we closed out and then in the circle back to for a follow-up.
Exactly, a full audit was done in two thousand eighteen, and we just uh circle back to it as a follow-up audit. To um determine the, the status of a remediation of the corrective actions.
That makes sense to me. Thank you. That, that was my only question. Well, actually, sorry, one last, um, for, for the, the audit plan for the third quarter. Um, can you speak a bit to the, the tool allotment operation audit just quickly?
Sure. Uh, so the tool allotment, um, uh, there are, I believe it's, uh, twenty-two fifty. Um, those, uh, employees are given an allotment to purchase tools. To, uh, to, um, do their, perform their task. And, uh, so there are certain parameters around, um, where, how they are, you know, what those tools are. Uh, how much they should expend for these tools. So, um, this was the first time, that's a full first-time audit for us. And, um, yeah, and again, that's why that came on our radar, because, you know, it is a first-time audit. And we, uh, felt that there was, um, uh, some risks there.
Okay, yeah, I thought so. That's, that would look new to me at least. Um, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're moving into the uh final presentation here. Uh, I'm a three-point-four fiscal affairs updates superintendent's. Um, F Y twenty-five proposed operating budget. Where are we? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I am standing in for Chief How, and she had a prior commitment and was unable to attend today. So I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna give a very quick update on where we are, um, with the F Y twenty-five budget cycle. Okay, so school budgeting has kicked off. Um, this includes. School-based staffing, um, with, and with that, there's three categories, as you probably are aware, unlocked, locked, and then locked plus. Um, just to make sure that you are updated. Unlock, those are the positions that can be purchased using the allocated school-based budgeting funds. Um, and schools can determine the composition and the mix. And then you have locked staffing. Those are the positions and resources that are funded and staffed by central office. Um, those, those positions typically have a very special requirement or restrictive funding. Um, a good example of that would be, for example, if a certain school receives special education staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, um. Secretaries, um, based on staffing policies and procedures of that special education department. Um, and then you have locked plus positions, and those are those positions and resources that are funded and staffed by central office. But the school is able to supplement existing allocations using their school-based budgeting funds. So, for example, if the central office provides a point-five F T E library media specialist position to an elementary school. That school may then decide to purchase an additional point-five library media specialist to make it a full. Time equivalent of one position. So, moving on in here, the school-based budgeting waits to determine how funding is allocated to each individual school. Under the blueprint legislation, those factors will still take into consideration grade level, compensatory education. Um, with the focus of student achievement and English language learners, or as I learned, it's now multilingual learners, I believe. Um, funding will also continue to be allocated for locked resources to include support for students with disabilities. Title-one specialty programs and grant-funded positions. Um, so base funding is attached to every Prince George's County Public School student attending an S B B eligible school. To support a baseline level of services, that's your teachers, administrative staff, and supplies. And then you have grade levels, specifically our students, um, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grades. Um, to ensure appropriate ratios for our early learners. Um, you have student achievement, that's considerations are spread across K through twelve spectrum based on student identified needs. And then our multilingual learners to support specific students based on a combination of their language proficiency level and grade level. Um, schools will turn in their allocated funding to build out their school budget. Um, which is what they're working on now, determining which positions and discretionary resources are needed to best support the student population at that school. Um, beginning with F Y twenty-five, we will be required to report on the allocation execution of these school-level resources. So just so that you can kind of see that with blueprint, sorry, skip ahead. We are required to show that at least seventy-five percent of the funding we receive for these following blueprint programs are following the student. Um, so for each school, the county, so the legislation requires us to distribute the minimum school funding amount for the applicable program. Multiplied by the school enrollment for the applicable program. And then our requirement will be honored before July first, twenty twenty-four, for fiscal year twenty-five. And each July one thereafter, we have to report on the board's compliance with this requirement. To the A I B and the M S D E. Um, and then more guidance is expected to follow. Um, more guidances will be provided during the S B B process. Um, they're, they're hosting clinics right now as schools are working on formulating their budget. Um, but we must provide them because we need to make sure that not only did seventy-five percent of the funding get allocated to school. Um, but we want to make sure that those costs meet the seventy-five percent minimum requirement. And then this is just a quick, um, outline of the timeline. So, we're currently in April, and you can kind of see. See that the schools are building their budget that includes the charter schools and quick update, we did, we did. Review the administrative fee. We wanted to make sure that two percent actually covered the cost that we are actually providing to charter schools. However, and to, to give schools time to adjust that not only blueprint, but any other changes that are coming down the pike. We are gonna hold them harmless for F Y twenty-five, and so they will have a two percent admin fee. Um, they received their revised allocations today, will update the tool so they can proceed budgeting. So, we heard all of the charter schools, we received an, we met about it, and then Chief How, she concurred and agreed. That we will hold them harmless for F Y twenty-five. Um, and not just for their admin fee, but also the per pupil amount. Oh, next month will be a busy month. Uh, we'll get our, uh, a data refreshed on our enrollment projections. We should receive, um, our state aid document, a final state aid document from M S D E, any final grant assumptions. Um, and then also as we transition into. We will also, the county, um, to review the budget at that point. Um, we do expect to receive a final budget from the county, which then the board will do a reconciliation. From the requested budget to improve budget, and then fi- final will be the board adopting the reconciled budget. So, that is all that I had at this time. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Yes, uh, really quickly, could you, uh, share with us how the telecoms, uh, tax revenue? Um, reduction is going to impact the budget for F Y twenty-five?
Yes, so. It's about a sixty-four or so million-dollar reduction year over year. For F Y twenty-five, we anticipate or expect, um. The availability payment of about thirty-two million, so that still leaves us with a, a thirty-million-dollar gap. Or a thirty-two-million-dollar gap that we have to close for F Y twenty-five. We are currently working on finding ways to close that gap. But it is a hit for the, for the, the district. Um, and without trying too hard to touch the schools, we're gonna try to find efficiencies. Uh, in-house and central offices. We're going through that drill now.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that you all present this to the board, either in the superintendent's report on the twenty-fifth, but. You know, I think that we really need to have a clear picture of how this is going to impact students. Um, what departments will be impacted? What will that mean for specific programs? You know. I don't think that I have a clear picture of that, um, and I think the public would like to know that as well. Thank you. Um, Chair Mickens Murray can go ahead.
Yes, uh, Chair Adam Stafford, I think we will need to make that a presentation for the May meeting. Because I cannot add it to the, uh, April meeting, but.
I'm not asking for an additional item. I'm asking that within their presentation, that they provide us with some type of update on. How this reduction of thirty million dollars is impacting the F Y budget.
I, I agree that we need that, but I'm not sure that we have a budget update on the February twenty-fifth meeting. But Revel, could you check that for me and get back to me tomorrow, please?
And if I could say, you know, I'm not asking for a separate budget update, but within the C E, within the superintendent's update. Um, I think this is a pretty substantial thing that he should talk to the board about. Or take and write a letter or send us some type of communication, but we haven't heard anything update on this at all.
I'm not disagreeing with you. We're just talking about the timeline, but we can do this offline. Thanks.
For clarification, I don't think Rebel's checking right now.
I am here. I'm sorry, checking emails. Yes, I will. Go ahead.
You will get back to me tomorrow. Nice. Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, also, my other question is just around, um. With the charter schools, um, so have they received some type of verification of how they'll receive the? Um, funding that they need, or what the, the changes or shifts have been, and what they can anticipate. So they can do long-range planning, so maybe if that's a memo or something, uh, what, what do you all plan to send out? How will they be verified on their funding allocation?
Yeah, so we'll send out, um, there will be communication, um, working through the charter office. Um, there'll be a memo. Also, we are looking to, um, make sure that we have regularly scheduled. Communication with operators throughout the year so that, um. They can clearly see, to make sure that we're on the same page. Um, especially as we've been enter into the F Y twenty-six formulation process. So, um, I'm pretty sure it'll be a memo, um, but it'll definitely be, we met with them on Monday, we met with every operator on Monday. To kind of walk through what blueprint, what that impact will look like. Um, but we're not gonna hold them to that for twenty-five, but we will, um, partner with them. So that there can be a mutual understanding for twenty-six and beyond.
Okay, um, thank you so much, and, you know, I just want to reiterate, I think that. At this meeting, I was hoping to hear a bit more detail about the impacts to the budget. And so I am hoping to hear that information, um, pretty soon, because I think that's very pertinent to the community. Thank you so much for that presentation. All right, so, uh, the follow-up items from our April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four committee meeting will be uploaded to board docs. Thank you, everyone, uh, for a great meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. The time is now six forty-seven P M. And the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee is adjourned. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.